Thank you, I want to welcome everyone to our September 19th meeting. Please note the council's in full attendance. First item on our agenda is items from council.
I have one.
Yes ma'am.
I had somebody call me that, is the city offering any, none, what do you got, not to disconnect people in the month of September for not paying their water bill and to waive the late fees? Can we do that?
Well, council can do, yes ma'am, council can do whatever, but I, we, the few days we were closed there, Donald, we did not do disconnects.
Yes ma'am, that's correct. There for the time periods that we were leading up to the storm and immediately following the storm, we did not charge late penalties and we did not do disconnects. And I think we started that back up, or we will start that back up this week, I believe, but I'd have to double check that.
So you can still pay your bill today late without penalties, or?
I'd have to double check that to be positive.
Is there any way we could do that, at least not the late fees, not necessarily disconnects? Because, you know, can we look at that?
Well, it's an ordinance, so I would need a council to, you know, we'd need to approve that via a council meeting, so.
That's right. It's something we would have to have an actual ordinance adopted to do by council.
And that would be two different readings.
Correct.
Because it's an ordinance.
Yeah, that's, that'd be very, practically speaking, very difficult. How many days were you not, were in there, about six?
I think, I want to say it was six or seven, but I'm not 100% sure, I'm sorry, I just don't have that information with me right now.
Are you, did you count those days in the periods that, you know, like, for example, after 30 days, something is considered late or whatever, are those days counted in that period?
It was, it was, and I don't remember what cycles they were, it was the cycles that were come and due right before the hurricane and the cycle that was due immediately following the hurricane, so it should have been two cycles that we, we kind of temporarily waived the late penalties and the, and the non-payment fees.
What if it was just an ordinance that would read any late fees generated in the month of September?
There, there would have been some that were leading up right before the storm hit that would have been come and due right there at the end of August also, so.
So could you pick a date in August through the end of September, any late fees generated between these two dates? Because it's not just a matter of the office being open, it's that a lot of people weren't able to return to work.
They're out of town.
Not just out of town, but think of all the restaurants that couldn't open because we didn't have water that was available for the restaurants because of the boil notice, all those employees there.
I mean, like I said, it's council's prerogative, we can bring it back on the 3rd, October 3rd.
Why don't we, y'all get together and write us up a good email about which days and how the impact would look and send it to all of us and then, obviously, there's, you can't do anything, it's all going to be in arrears if we were to do anything and I suppose it would be credited to someone's bill, that's a lot of work.
Well, you could use October then, just because, you know, I'm just saying that to give something back because of the inconvenience that everybody had and, you know, like, like Jeff said, you know, some people haven't gone back to work, some people are without water, some people, you know, are still struggling real hard to try and get to their houses.
We can put together an email and find out exactly what UBO did up to this point.
How many accounts, how much we're talking about, how many days?
Sir, but I'm going to remind council that y'all cannot respond to an email because that violates the Open Meetings Act, so.
No, 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 yeah, no.
We can, you know, provide some data or we can just bring it forth as an ordinance on the.
I'm sorry I wasn't here last week, but I wanted to bring it up last week, but I mean, last city council meeting, which was two weeks ago.
And so the logistics of how it would work, it really would be more like a credit or if, if the bill wasn't paid, or?
So just, Donald, I meant, the system should be able to handle that without any...
But it wouldn't necessarily give the relief, right now it would give the relief after the ordinance was passed.
That's correct.
I mean, this has just, just come up, you don't have a lot of answers, that's why I'd like to see some little bit of information and then if, we'll all have that information the next meeting and if someone wants to ask for it to be on the agenda and formalized and voted on, we can do that, but I don't, what does it cost and how many people does it affect and all that good stuff? That's what I'm, I would like, so, I mean, y'all.
They, not to disagree with you, but if we don't do it on the 3rd, then you're putting it off another two weeks and you're into November before it's adopted, so probably would be a lot easier to just go ahead and bring the ordinance back for a first reading and then, you know, with the information, so.
Same thing, yeah.
You voted up or down?
No, I understand, I understand.
Yes, yes, sir. So instead of postponing it two weeks.
Okay.
If it was done as an emergency reading, it would take super majority?
Correct.
I don't know that it qualifies for emergency reading, and if you look at technically, at the, what qualifies for emergency, so.
Okay, so we'll just put it on the October 3rd agenda and then we can decide then.
But we'll still gather the information, the data for you.
Sure.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're still under items from council. I have one, we will need to make an appointee to the appraisal district board, our person there is up very soon and that'll need to be on the 3rd agenda, October 3rd, so we'll bring that back with a blank in it, so I don't know which one of you guys, it needs to be a council member. Is, unless someone's interested now, you might, well, we can just fill it in on the 3rd, so. I was on that board for a lot of years, so if you have questions later, ask me, you do have to go to regular meetings.
And Mr. Alvarez is currently serving, that term ends in January, so we have to, council has to make a recommendation by the, at our 3rd meeting.
Okay. We'll do yours at the end.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else from council? Okay, we'll, we'll close that item, move to citizens communication, anyone like to come forward and speak about anything at all, if you would, at least just your name for the record and try to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Good afternoon, I'm John Swanson, I live at 205 Cannon, and I came down to talk about the learnings from the hurricane and what went right and where are opportunities for improvements. What went right? To me, drainage went right, a very important piece, at least in my neighborhood, I can't speak for everybody, but when I awoke on Saturday morning, I was amazed that the electric was on, you know, I'd heard this was a disastrous event and we were to evacuate and I had to make a decision not to, to be prepared, that, that in itself, evacuating, is a challenging ordeal, that I, I'm not sure you give the proper credit to that, having to travel and put up with the large crowds that are going from all different places in there. So what worked right, the drainage, I was able to remove some branches and it flowed, which did have a lot of tree damage, but those, removing those limbs and getting together with the neighbors and everything was something that we could do to mitigate the worst of it, that's not something your first responders can deal with, okay? So I was able to help and I still want to help, but we were prepared for five days to be out and we had sufficient water and means, the surprise also on Saturday morning, the water work, didn't work for long, but it, it worked, so we took advantage of that, that window, we were prepared for it already and had sufficient water for it, but it was nice, but then it died and then that was expected, continued on, everything worked as planned and got the generator up and running. You know something that worked, that surprised me, was the satellite TV. We had no communications, okay, but when I cranked up the generator, I could turn on the TV and the satellite worked. Now, I have internet through Southern Link and unfortunately, the internet was the last thing that came on. We got electric about a week later, but internet came on about a, four or five days after that. So communications was important and we've missed you guys, okay? And I say that as an old timer that had cranked up the radio, you know, I was on emergency radio, had the batteries and everything for it and the radio didn't work, I don't know what happened there, but you guys weren't using the radio anyway. Fortunately, I've got a daughter who's pretty smart on this communication Facebook wizardry and she could relay information to me, so I was able to figure out when the water came back on and I'm sure you guys are going to learn, learn from that on the water. I got a lot of notes, so the, the only real improvement that I've got is, don't do anything to hurt that drainage and to, if we can improve communications, and I don't know the answer to it, I, you know, I mean, you guys could have had Facebook working perfectly, it would not have done me any good, I'm not smart enough, so you got to find something that works for people that are going to stay and people that are going to go. Why didn't I go? It was serious, I was concerned, why didn't I go? Because my biggest concern, that travel was one hazard that is very serious, but the other one is the right of return, I do not like, and we haven't solved that problem yet, of, I want to be able to return and restore the property as quickly as I can, and so I, I wanted to be there, I could do things to help mitigate the damage, if I'm gone, I can't do that, okay? So that's why I didn't go, and, and the structure I have is been sufficiently fortified from learnings from different hurricanes that I think I can handle and the knowledge and experience of dealing with hurricanes, I think I have learned enough to be there to help you. If you guys would have had a real disaster on your hands, you'd have needed some extra hands, I'm available, okay? Like many of our citizens, not just me, many of them stepped up to the plate and did a lot of good, important things and, man, I can't say enough about those electric crews that came from gosh knows where, but thank you for their, their being here and, and internet being the last one, and I know I'm overrunning my time and you cut me off, you, I'm going to make it, I'm going to make it quick, but I, I went down to the internet people, man, they got a nice command center and they had, you know, organization and structure to it, those people were good, I mean, excellent, 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 and we certainly owe a lot of gratitude to those, those people too. Okay, so, that's my input, you guys did good, okay, and I, I'm proud of you guys for what you did on the, on the hurricane, but keep in mind on the evacuation, there are, you're driving us into hazards as well as we're staying. Now, there are people that should leave, no question about it, can't handle it, but there are others that can and we try to do what we can to, to help everybody.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Swanson. Citizens communication still open? For anyone who'd like to come forward, talk about anything at all? Seeing no one, we'll close citizens communication and move into ordinances without public hearings.
Item C1 is an ordinance amending the 2016-17 City of Victoria General Fund and VES Fund budget to provide funding in the amount of $767,004 for the replacement of a pumper truck and an ambulance for the fire department, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for savings and an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item C1?
Second. Motion seconded, any discussions or questions?
I just have one quick question.
Yes ma'am.
When we order these pumpers, do they go to a specific station or fire station or do we use them anywhere?
We just look at the, the, the truck that needs to be replaced.
And it'll stay in that one station?
Well, we kind of rotate our vehicles around to try to keep the mileage down, so they may start at one station and two years later, they may be at a different station, so we're not sure this one's going to go.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you, chief. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Thank you. C2.
C2 is an ordinance granting a variance from Section 14-10B and C of the Victoria City Code, which prohibits the sale of alcoholic beverages within 300 feet of a church, school, public hospital, or childcare facility for property located at 7300 North Main Street, which is at the intersection of Main Street and Loop 463 adjacent to West High School, owned by Brian and Denise Dugash, providing for savings and declaring an effective date.
I move?
Second.
Motion seconded, any questions? Ms. Scott, you have one?
I'm not opposed to the variance request, but I think that this ordinance is overly broad, as it's written, it allows for consumption and all types of liquor sales on property, that's an issue that we tackled not too long ago and caused us to amend the ordinance. In this case, the request is for the ability to use an off-premises beer and wine sales permit, and I'd like to limit the ordinance to just that. I've communicated this with Thomas and he's communicated it with the applicant and they have no objection, so after discussion, if, if anybody is in agreement or not in agreement, I do have wording for an amendment.
I was under the impression that they have to post a sign that says that, you know, they can sell the liquor there, but they can't consume it, all convenience stores have those signs out posted on the outside of the premises.
The answer to that question is yes, there will be a posting there, depending on which type of permit they apply for, for that store. Most convenience stores operate under a BQ or a BF style permit, which is an off-premise wine and beer permit. Our ordinance, the variance that I drafted, doesn't specifically say that it's limited to only that, and so Ms. Scott is correct, the way I drafted the ordinance, they could go out and apply for a mixed beverage permit and open a bar, because the, the variance ordinance is written too broadly, and so what she's proposing is to narrow it down to only the type of permit that a convenience store would likely use.
But that's only for this variance?
Correct.
You might want to...
License that could be given to a convenience store? They can't go in there and get a, a mixed beverage if they're just going to be selling it?
Well, if they built another structure, actually built a bar, is that what you're concerned about?
Right, and, and there's nothing there right now and if we grant this variance, you know, I guess it's my years on the planning commission that I learned to look down the road because you don't have anything there now, things change, ownerships change, and, you know, I, I think that they've been very upfront with what they're wanting to do, the school district is not opposing it because of what they're wanting to do, but if we grant this variance, we're opening it up and we're the leaders, we're the ones that are supposed to be looking down the road and looking at the possibilities, otherwise we're the ones that get the finger pointed at us, why didn't they think about that?
But if they reapply, it would be under the way the ordinance is written now, so the, the...
It's important to remember the variance is to the piece of property, so if they sell the property, there's nothing stopping someone else from building a bar there, and that would be a different type of...
But they would have to apply for variance again.
No, because the property is varianced already.
The variance runs with the land.
So if you agree with this, you would support her amendment, and then we need to see that ordinance back up here again and just clarify it in the ordinance going forward.
The ordinance itself is not the issue, the ordinance itself does regulate within these, within this setback, it would prohibit this permit entirely. The, the issue here is that the variance that we're considering tonight is excessively broad.
I understand.
Let me read the, the motion to amend and I will give total credit to the city attorney for the language, but, and it's really just adding a paragraph, so I move that the ordn, I move to amend the ordinance to add a paragraph 1A immediately before, immediately preceding numbered paragraph 2, to read, "This variance is conditioned upon the sale of wine and beer being limited to off-premise consumption in accordance with a valid wine and beer retailer's off-premises permit, parentheses, BQ, from the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission and shall not be construed to allow any sale of liquor of any, or any sale of alcohol for on-premise consumption."
Second.
So, as well, the last time, and I, I thought when we did modify the ordinance, this came up too, I thought somebody in here, the difference between on-premise and off-premise, but I, my other remarks were, if we wanted to make the ordinance a little bit more liberal and specified in there, we might see fewer variances, you know, most of us, when we think of a church or school, we don't want a bar, we don't think about convenience stores, I don't, so, I mean, I, I can easily support this, I'm just saying, anyway.
And I'd ask Thomas to see if there was anything that looked viable, on-premise, off-premise consumption could be a distinguishing mark in our ordinance, were you able to find anything where other towns had done similarly?
No, I was, I was not able to locate another city that distinguished it that way, but I, there may certainly be some that I did not find.
I just thought maybe there would be something good there that we could use.
Because otherwise, council needs to remember to do this on every variance.
Right.
So, you know, but I guess that's the way it's going to be, so.
I would support tweaking what we have written in our ordinances already.
Why don't, if you look at that a little bit more and let's have that discussion again, no rush, obviously, but, okay.
I just thought maybe there was something that, you could make that distinction, it would make the difference that we intended to make. On-premise consumption is like a bar and other things of that nature, off-premise, you buy it, you take it with you, take it home, whatever, that could be a big distinction or maybe it's not a big enough distinction, I'm not sure, I just thought we ought to try to research it.
We have that occurring in a lot of places already, I mean, HEB is next to schools and, you know, anyway. Okay, good, more, okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend, is there any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, okay, the motion to amend passes, is there any further discussion on the variance itself as amended? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, thank you. Was that C3?
That was C2.
Okay, now C3.
C3 is discuss and approve an ordinance by the city council of the City of Victoria, Texas, authorizing the issuance, sale, delivery of City of Victoria, Texas Utility System Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2017, approving and authorizing an official statement and the distribution thereof, an escrow agreement and a pending agent registrar agreement, approving and authorizing all other instruments and procedures related thereto, delegating authority to the mayor or city manager to select the outstanding bonds to be refunded and approve all final terms of the bonds, declaring an emergency, providing for an immediate effective date.
Let's open the public hearing first on C3, if anyone would like to speak to this item alone, now would be the time. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion and a second, are there questions? Pretty routine.
I'm taking your lead, I'm getting the, the signal not to, not to say anything.
Okay. Not for me.
I don't know, Dusty may have a hard time sitting down, but.
I'll go for a brief explanation.
Okay, sure. I know, I know Dusty's itching to get up here, so I told him to keep it somewhat brief, but, probably just a few introductory comments, the biggest thing here is that this, this is, I'm not actually approving any bonds tonight, we're not doing a bond sale, there's no refunding tonight, this is essentially laying the groundwork for a future refunding opportunity, we're looking probably late October, the biggest thing here, this would allow the final documents to be signed by city manager and mayor, and again, we have Dusty Trailer with RBC Capital Markets, he's just giving you an overview of the refunding opportunity.
I do appreciate the opportunity to address the council this evening. Again, Dusty Trailer, managing director with RBC Capital Markets, just, just briefly, this is a refinancing opportunity for savings of the, some of the city's utility system revenue secured bonds, right now, we're talking about par amount of bonds to be refinanced that totals about $8.795 million, combined, those bonds carry an interest rate about 4.91%, if we were going to be in the market today to accomplish the refinancing now, we think that the, the interest rate would be about, the all-in interest rate would be about a 2.73%, so a little over a 2% reduction in interest rate, and over the life of those bonds, that would produce estimated savings of approximately $865,000 or appro, or on average, $48,000 per year of debt service savings, interest avoidance by refinancing these bonds. On a present value savings percentage basis, right now, that number is about 8.27%. The ordinance before you, I believe, mandates that we cannot move forward with this if there is a savings that's below a 3% threshold, so there's kind of a safety net there, if this thing moves, moves away from us, we'd have to come back to council, but that's, that's my brief explanation this evening, but we think it'd be a good opportunity for the city to, to take advantage of low interest rates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, thank you very much, thank you, Dusty. Consent agenda, one item.
There's only one item on the consent agenda tonight, it is the approval of minutes of the special meetings on August 24th, 2017, August 29th, 2017, September 3rd, 2017, and the regular meeting of September 5th, 2017, and the special meeting on September 7th, 2017.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Thank you. Motion seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, okay, ayes have it. E1.
E1 is a resolution appointing one new member and reappointing four current members to the food establishment appeals board and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve item E1?
Second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Thank you. E2.
E2 is a resolution approving the purchase of a Piers enforcer pumper from Sidens Martin Emergency Group in the amount of $567,004, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date.
Move to adopt?
Second. Motion seconded, are there any questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, ayes have it. So we have city manager reports, I know are...
We have an E3.
You have an E3.
I'm sorry, the version of the packet that you have, it does not have the final version.
I wondered where the ambulance wasn't in that resolution, I know we did one early to save some money.
Asher Mala asked me the same question.
Okay.
Item E3 is a resolution approving the purchase of an ambulance from Frazier Limited in the amount of $195,450, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date.
If motion approved, E1.
Second.
Or E3, I'm sorry.
All right, E3, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, the ayes have it, thank you. We do have a brief city manager report.
Yeah, I just, it's, it's not on the agenda, but I thought I'd give a quick update on what's kind of been going on because of Harvey. Out of our 16 parks, takeaway Riverside, so that's down to 15 parks, we, we're lacking three that need to be opened, that's Hopkins Park, Queen City, and Will Rogers, Hopkins should be open tomorrow and we're hoping Queen City and Will Rogers will be open by the end of the week, so that means all but Riverside parks will be back open for the public, which is a great testament to the parks crews and all the work they're doing. Riverside, like I said before, I'm not really sure when we're going to open it back up. Texas Forestry Service has been in there starting yesterday to assess trees, to give us an idea of what trees need to be cut down and which trees can be saved, so they're looking at a lot of trees and as of right now, those estimates look like about a third of what they've looked at will need to be removed, which is, there's, the trees are damaged extensively in the park. So, Community Center opens back up October 1, have an event, the first event in October is the OLV Fall Festival on October the 8th, so the office area out there, it was damaged from the storm, so we're not... So the office area out there, it was damaged from the storm, so we're not really sure when the staff will be back out in the office, but the events will start going on October 1, which I know a lot of people are excited about that. Development Services, code enforcement has started doing high weeds and grass complaints. You know, they kind of didn't do it for a few weeks because of all the cleanup and all, but they're back starting that. Inspectors, and I see Rick Madrid back there, inspectors and code enforcement are working on the weekends, you know, looking for those that are doing construction work on the weekends to try to catch those. Also looking for what they call bandit signs, the signs that should not be out, and people working without appropriate permits and contractor license in the city, because we know we've got a group of people that have moved in and, you know, aren't from this area, and so we're making sure that those have the right license. Library, back to normal hours this week. I know they're glad, the staff's glad, the patrons are glad. I was down there, I guess, two weeks ago, and the patrons that had books that were on hold or in our library loans were picking them up out the back door, so they were making arrangements for that. The children's storytime, though, has been temporarily moved to St. Francis Episcopal Church on 3002 Miore Lane, and that's due to the damage in the bronte room. And we're really not sure when the bronte room damage is going to be repaired and will open back up. So that's a temporary item for right now. So brush, and I'm sure, I know I will have Darrell come up and mention one item on the brush with the waste management roll-offs, but Ash Brett is 17 days into this project. They're about 63, 64% complete. They've picked up 126,000 cubic yards of the 200,000. There's still brush to be picked up, but they're working seven days a week, and, you know, people still can go out to Aloe Field to drop brush off if they wish to. If you've not driven out that way, you should go just look at the mound of chipped brush. It's absolutely incredible, so it's amazing. We have a mountain in that area. But the city started picking yard waste up yesterday. We think it's going to take us about two weeks to get caught up on that. So what was set out for a Monday normal pickup did not get finished on Monday. They finished it up today, but as you drive around, you'll notice that there is a lot of yard waste out in bags. Recycling's going to resume October 2. So I know there's a lot of folks glad about that. So this will be the last week that people can put garbage in the green can. So starting next week, we're just going to pick up the gray can, so, which, you know, is another sign of us getting back to some normalcy, and we're not going to pick up plastic bags. So Darrell's shaking his head. So Darrell, come up and let's talk about the commercial roll-off for storm debris and waste management and our contract with waste management.
Good evening. Our contract with waste management has a force majeure clause in it, which primarily says that in case of an act of God, a large storm, tornado, something to that effect, that waste management is not expected to go out and pick up all the storm debris. Any major contract that you have with a garbage hauler is going to say the same thing. And so we've met with waste management. They sent us a kind of a carryover contract that we could look at. Charmel and I took some time, we looked at that. We had a conference call with waste management, and based on rates, based on the need, what we've decided to do is open the city up temporarily for about 90 days. What that will do is allow any roll-off to be set in town. The things to remember is this is roll-off only, for storm debris only. This is not Walmart needs a dumpster to get rid of some food, so they call whoever they want. The franchise is still in place for everything else. This is for storm debris recovery only, and that's the key. My department will be, myself and my staff will be responsible for keeping up with who's where and how that service is being handled, because again, if customers having trouble with that contractor, they can call me and we'll handle that, just like it works with waste management. The date that we would start is upon approval, we'd move forward, starting tomorrow. I'll contact the people that we've been in contact with. The ending date will be December 31. If we see that there is still debris, which I'm not expecting, I don't think it's as bad as what we originally thought, I would come back and ask that we extend that. At this point, I don't see that need.
And we don't need any formal action from council on that. The contract allows that. So we just wanted to make sure you knew that we were going to move forward with opening it up. So you'll see some other contractors putting roll-off boxes down in town.
I don't speak the language. What does that mean?
Those are the large construction boxes. They're 20 cubic yard, 30 cubic yard, 40 cubic yard. You may see some 15s, and I know that there's some companies that have some smaller ones that are around. And so those are the boxes you would normally see at construction sites.
Most recently, just for an example, the business that's across from 700 Main at the corner of Main and Rio Grande, they've had a large roll-off.
Yeah, they've got a 40-yard there.
Box in front of there for their construction. So as you come by every day, you probably haven't noticed it, but...
And we'll be checking to make sure that everything stays in line, just with the way that expected. If we see people dropping boxes that aren't for storm debris, they'll be asked to move those boxes just like they are now.
I was going to show you a picture in a minute. One, are you, is that it? One quick thing, I have had, it's been interesting, a few companies knocking on doors saying they know me, that somehow I may endorse them, and I do not. That does not mean those companies don't do good work. They may. I just don't endorse anyone. I had to call one and say, you need to tell your salespeople to stop that. And I'm sure they do find work, but I don't endorse anyone. And it was an out-of-town company that had connections through mutual friends and kind of got carried away. I just want to say that, so.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
One last thing, since you, if you don't mind. You know, we're still getting door-to-door solicitors, and if somebody shows up at your house, ask them if they have a permit from the city to be going door-to-door. I know I had somebody at my house last week, and they did not. So, but we need the public. Governor's aide over there, that's a mistake, yeah. Yeah, the unfortunate thing was I answered the door, not my husband, but anyway, I think it's important that the public continue to remember to be careful about solicitors going door-to-door and check for references and credentials, because we do have people in town that probably don't have the best motives in place, so.
With that in mind, does FEMA send roofers to people's homes?
No, ma'am.
Because I know of someone that thought that, you know, well, FEMA sent them out and that they're going to do my roof. FEMA's going to do my roof, so that is not the case.
FEMA does not endorse anybody, and if you have somebody with a business card that has FEMA's little thing on there, it's not accurate.
They don't like that.
No, they don't.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
Okay. If that's all, we're adjourned. Thank you.